All right, I will call this festivity to order at 7:10. 2.0 adjustments to the agenda, are there any? Hearing none. 3.0 audience communications. We have no audience, live that is. Thank you for joining us if you are. So we have nothing on that and we'll go to 4.0 presentations.
So this wraps up our student service presentation here and we have with us today Anne Wright Schenk, who is our ELL teacher at Heinsberg Community School. We share her with CDU and we're very impressed with the work that she's been able to do. And the board has been really impressed with the presentations all year in terms of our student support model. It's really giving them a glimpse into a school that is otherwise, it's often lost in the bigger picture. So without further ado, the stage is yours.
Okay.
And I'm gonna button push.
Oh great, thanks Jeff. So my name is Anne Wright Schenk, I'm an English language learner teacher. I've been in the district, it'll be five and a half years at the end of the school year. And I have actually worked in every building in the district. So go ahead and think Jeff, so there are six of us district wide. And we're presenting this information because the increasing number of Ls and their changing needs in the district.
Sorry.
Okay. So you can see me, Rachel Tebow had been at Heinsberg Community School for a really long time. Now she's at Shelburne, there are two full-time at Shelburne. The Williston School District shares two. And then there's a full-time educator here at CDU, along with myself, who's there for halftime. Okay, next slide Jeff. So I think I already mentioned that. So in 2003, there were 14 Ls in the CSSU. And then you can see that the population has really grown. Now we have about 125. And the numbers have changed a little bit. Some of our data was taken from the very beginning of the school year. And one thing about ELLs is that they tend to be a little bit more transient than some of our other populations. So the numbers really fluctuate throughout the school year. And this growth mirrors a nationwide trend. It's the fastest growing in the United States. One thing that's really unusual about us in Vermont is that we have very few Spanish speakers. The trend nationwide is really that most ELLs are Spanish speakers. And even though our numbers are increasing, we're still considered a low incidence school district, meaning the proportion of L students per main population is quite small. And you can see Heinsberg, I'm here, his head, just a little bit of growth. It hasn't really gotten much in the last five years. And this number, okay, you can go to the next slide Jeff, because I think I go into more detail. So that number, actually at HCS we have eight. And that previous number represented the number of students that were screened, the kindergartners coming in, and then also the students that get drag services and the students that are monitored. And then we also had a student moving out of the district. You can see that they're monitored for two years, and I can go into that a little bit more. But they have to achieve English proficiency across four domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And then after they've done that, just because the academic rigors at first grade are slightly different to third grade, we monitor to make sure that their language development is keeping pace with their reading and writing. And the language backgrounds that we have, even though we have few students, Quechua, Chile, Spanish, Chinese, Dutch, and French. Okay, next slide Jeff. And a little bit about them. We talk about ELL, there are many different kinds of ELL students. Newcomers are students that have been here for less than a year. Refugees have come with a whole series of challenges usually because of the circumstances from which they left. Immigrants who have chosen to come sometimes have an easier transition. And Asilies are the political refugees. And then SLS and international adoptions. We don't have very many SLS students in the district. Burlington and Woodersky are seeing an increased rise in the number of them. And those are students with limited or interrupted formal education. So they might be coming from refugee camps but have had absolutely no education whatsoever or had a break of, you know, 10 years in their education. So depending on the background, just like any of our students, that really influences their learning performance in the classroom. Okay Jeff, so the way that we identify ELL students. I was just at physical therapy today, I should not be doing that with my neck. I'm gonna stand up. So the way that we identify ELL students is the very first thing is there's a home language survey. And on that, and this is a survey that we get from the state, it's mandated from the state. It goes through and asks questions about the parents' language background as well as the exposure of the child. If there's anything on there other than English, that's an immediate follow-up from us. But that's only the first thing that we do. After that, we look at their school records, we screen them, we talk to the parents, we talk to the teachers. And there's an assessment for them, the annual federally mandated test that we give to them once a year to see if they have made enough progress that they no longer require help. So that assessment is annual. And a lot of times I get questions about, well, how are they doing? Because that test is so comprehensive, it takes multiple hours to administer that. About June 3 and 4 total. It's kind of like the ELL kneecap or the ELL ASVAC. It's not something that we repeat through the year. So here's more about the testing. And this annual assessment in March determines everything. And we do not make educational decisions about who graduates from the L program or who requires more services. All of that is done dependent on the results of the test and whether the standards are met or not. And I talked a little bit about even after they reach the scores, they're monitored. One thing that happens quite a bit is that it's fairly easy for a student to go from a 1 to a 2. You really not make much progress. Anything to getting a little bit better. But once they get up into 3, 4, and 5, it can take longer for them to really make the progress they need to go over that hump. Because they're really being required to use much more complex academic language.
Anne, could you speak a little bit about where our kids are?
So our kids, yeah. So we have kids that are over here. And really when they're accident off the program, they have to get, their cut score is here in both writing and reading, they have to at least have a 4. Their overall score is a 5. So students can meet the cut score and not necessarily need services, go to monitoring status. When they're at a 5, not when they're at a 6. So we don't wait, and a 6 is really equivalent to a native speaker. So our kids right now that we have are right about in here. And most of them, the last domain to develop is the writing. That's the most difficult thing to do, it's the productive skill of the language. And like a lot of our regular student population, it's really challenging to write academically. So that's the last thing usually that develops. Their speaking develops fairly quickly and their listening. And the great thing about, well, this is my next slide, if you can go to the next slide. So the incredible thing that you'll see if you see any of these kids is that if you acquire a language before you hit puberty, you'll have a native-like accent. So hard to do it if you start doing it in high school. But these little kids, you'll see them, they're using slang, there's absolutely no accent. And it's incredible for me to see some of the kids that just got here two years ago with no accent. So anyway.
And they really like to talk. Once they acquire the language, yeah.
They really like to talk a lot. So this is just a little bit, an overview of second language acquisition. And the big thing here is that there's a difference between the BICS, the Basics Interpersonal Communicative Skills. And that would be the hi, how are you, I like apples, I'm thirsty, pass me the pencil versus CALP, which is the more academic language. So we were talking about students, for example, we're doing ASVAC testing. And I have, there are two ELL students at Heinsberg, incredibly bright students. Really, really participatory in the classroom. And I was in the classroom when they were doing the performance task. And the teacher went over everything and was talking about making sandwiches and how many slices you need, and slices of turkey, and slices of bread, and loaves, and packages. And I watched my two students and they contributed and called out a couple things and asked them questions. Afterwards, I took the ASVAC and the ASVAC test had loaf, package, and slice in it. Neither one of them knew what that was. But they didn't raise their hand to ask for clarification in the classroom. I think because of being overwhelmed in the classroom a bit. Yet they asked me. And then the other thing was that they, hold on a second, I'll just make sure I thought. Oh, I was thinking afterwards, well, probably neither one of these children go home doing sandwiches. They're eating a completely different style of food. So it's not like mom and dad are packing them peanut butter and jelly sandwiches every day. They're not having, you know, tuna meltits and there's nothing else to eat in the house, like we do at my house. They're having rice in a big bowl, you know, or they're having bufo in a big bowl. Okay, next slide. So this is a really big piece with some of the new students that we get is the acculturation. And many students come from a very different mile of education. So everything from parent involvement to school reflection requires new learning. Even going through the line and figuring out what you can have and what you can't is new learning. And we often forget that children learn how to learn when they come to kindergarten. So if we get kids that come in as third graders, they're still learning how to learn. How to stand in a line, how to take turns, why is your seat changed, when can you talk, when can't you talk? So peer interaction, classroom participation, homeschool journals, parent teacher conferences, homework expectation, classroom plays may all be new. And school really now is such a model of family participation. And things are emailed home, and there's sign-up for parent teacher conferences on the web. And the Viking is sent home by email. So a lot of the parents are really having to learn all of that in addition to the new culture. And this can be really challenging for students. I have, there's one student that we have at Heinsberg who's, multiple times I've been talking to some of the student services because there's another student in the classroom who has a one-on-one helping. And that student, for whatever reason, can butt heads with mine, with the ELL student. And the ELL student doesn't really quite know how to navigate it. Because it's just different. All right, so the next slide Jeff. So the role, I already went over how we identify. I provide direct English language instruction, so I'm working with the students on their English. I also go into classes to support students, collaborate and co-teach with content teachers. Right now, we're starting to work on colonial America and colonial America vocabulary to give the students some background. Because as today, they don't know North Carolina, Georgia, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania. Those names kind of sound familiar, they're not sure what they are. So part of it is front-loading them so that when they go into the classroom, they can be more successful with that language and participate when the teacher starts to talk about it. I administer the annual Vida assessment, determine accommodations, and administer the test. Right now, I've been doing the ASVAC for the last two weeks with a couple of different students. And one of the big roles here is advocating for the ELL students and their families and then facilitating that home-school community connection. And I think that's really what I was touching on in the prior side. But these families really need support. They're used to a system where either parents didn't really even come into the school. And depending on the background that the parents don't have, they might not be comfortable with coming into the school. That's a different role for them, talking to a teacher. And asking teachers questions can be new for them. And as well, a lot of times, they don't, if they've just come here navigating mud season and outdoor recess and snow pants and hats and mittens, calling up to the school nurse if they're sick and filling out the forms, there are a lot of things that go on with the students and their families outside of school day. Okay.
Yeah, and in connection with that, I look at Anne as mostly ELL teacher, part-time school social worker, part-time school counselor, part-time, you know, core academic teacher. I mean, the ELL teacher is so, there's so many hats that you wear.
And so one example of this is they just had the eighth grade trip to Montreal. And I'm gonna cry. Look at the eighth graders, this great kid, if anybody should go on a rewarding trip for the hard work, this kid is the model child for that. And has a passport, has an American passport, happened to be born in America. Started asking dad two months ago, you know, please, 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 please. I found out, I didn't share this with you Jeff, I finally brought his older sister, his older sisters are here. She looked for four hours, the night before the trip, and finally found it. And she said, after two hours, I wanted to give up. But I looked at his face and he was just looking at me, did you find it? She's like, so I kept looking. But it's incredible. So stuff like that that you wouldn't think, you know, but that was a lot of follow-up with dad and the siblings to finally get that passport. And he did go and he had a great time. So the last thing is we're gonna meet a couple of students. And they're gonna tell you, hopefully the speaker is loud enough.
Oh, thanks.
I turn them on.
Oh, you turn them on.
I don't know about the volume on the actual computer, I didn't check that Jeff.
Okay. Oh, oh geez.
Good job Jeff.
I think I just muted it.
My name is Francis. I'm from, I don't know the tongue, I'm a Jamaican. I swear.
I am an Indian.
I'm a family member.
I'm an intergrader.
I say that, Quechua, very normal, that's my original language.
At home, I speak Chinese.
And I've been here in America for two years now.
I started school when I was in preschool.
When I came into Heinsberg School, I was math class and then I made a joke out loud. I didn't even know that it was supposed to be funny, just say the word. And suddenly people just stopped laughing and I was like, wow, who did this? So I just educated 10 words that people laugh at. And it was really tough at the beginning because like I was, I like to laugh and I like to laugh. That was tough for me, you know, I can do it.
When I started, I was school, everybody was speaking a different language and I was confused what they were saying. It used to be difficult to write English. I used to try to spell some Chinese word. But now I know how to spell English.
And ELL is a really good thing because it's been a huge part of me and how I learned my English. Because every time I come to an English class, I feel free. Still, I can like ask questions without being shy and like feel happy about myself and like not think of previous things that I make and think of trends that helped me a lot every single day. And ELL is a fun class because like we never stopped learning English. And what I always get, and like I love these classes, like going to a class means this is the world. That we mean in my whole life, so I love ELL.
How ELLs taught me is that, that like sometime I, you know, like a little head start to like do some researching of like my report in the classroom, like do some reports sometime. And another reason why is that like it helped me like on spelling and S and the ASVAC test. We can talk about it to get more understanding.
Here's one of the ones I think Jeff was referring to, like once they learn English, they're like, we talk a lot. So then I think my last slide is just if there was any questions, and I didn't look at the time, Dana, I've been talking for a while. Yeah.
So it seems to me that, I just had this thought, that a lot of the skills that you bring into the school community and the facilitation and working with parents and so forth, seems to me it could cross over to other groups within the community who may not feel comfortable in the school. And I'm just wondering if you have the opportunity to share some of your expertise in that area.
You know, well, sort of, a little bit that way, I guess. Like I was just talking to Kate, I just came back from a conference. And one of the presentations was books as bridges. And it was all about multicultural classrooms and really accepting diversity. And I know there've been a couple of things that have happened through the years and through the two years that the students have been there. And you can see that the students, some of the students are African. So that's a new experience, I think, for some of the Heinsberg kids. And this presentation was talking about ways to introduce books with children that represent all different kinds of people in positive ways. So that you're not always talking about, and using picture books with kids and then discussing it. And they were saying that they did a study and one picture book for a week, for six weeks with a discussion is enough to then kind of disseminate and make children really recognize that difference is okay. So I was just talking about Kate this morning, I sent you that email about that, and Karina, our librarian. So I guess that's a little bit of crossover.
Yeah, and I was thinking of how to bring engaged parents to, who don't want to, who defer to the school for authority.
Right, and I haven't really done that because.
But that's just a thought.
Yeah, yeah. Because I know for me, because I tend to see families and I'm in the high school, so sometimes I know older siblings, it's really developing that relationship with a family, which takes a while sometimes, yeah.
This is very interesting.
Fabington, my kid's classroom.
Yeah.
They love him. And I'll say that, you know, I think it's so positive to have him in the classroom because, you know, he'll make comments about life back in Tanzania and the kids are like, wow, like, you know. It's, he was under some difficult situations and it just makes him kind of a whole worldview and experience. You know, he's a phenomenal kid.
Yeah, he really is a great kid. They're all great kids. But yeah, that's, I guess that was one of them that I didn't recommend. But certainly sometimes their backgrounds, they have had very interesting life experiences. So if they're, if they're able to share those, yeah, he's really seen a lot of stuff. Which you wouldn't necessarily expect coming, he didn't come from a refugee camp, but he saw a lot.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you, fabulous.
I have one question, might not be for Anne, just for you guys to confirm. From a budgetary standpoint, this is a service from SU.
Yeah.
It's not, I don't know why I shouldn't ask it, but it's not under special education.
No.
It's a special program for target students.
So the ELL.
It's one of the shared services that we purchase from SU.
That's correct. That's exactly right. And we monitor enrollment and it's the beauty of having now a population that supports six people as we can shift their FTE dependent, because the population's just kind of really shuffle right now. Shelburne is on the rise and so very scary.
And as Anne said, even within a school year, and a school can fluctuate.
And sometimes we have families now, we have, one of the districts had 11 children that just moved out. So you can imagine how that kind of skews things. We have another family with eight children. So sometimes when these families come in, that's a huge, a huge population loss. Or if they leave, it's a huge decrease. Right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, 5.0 reports to the board, 5.1 principals report.
Okay, so it was, I think, the last principal's report of the year, it was pretty lengthy, sorry about that. It was longer than anyone we've done. Just wanted to let you know about all the things that are happening before the end of the year. There are some music concerts coming up, if you're able to attend any of them. I don't know if you saw the art show, but that was great. A lot of gardening is happening. Kids are out there all, every day, different classes, doing all sorts of things with the garden and our wonderful parent volunteers. We got another environmental award, thanks to Tim Pete. And it's another governor's award for environmental excellence, which we're pretty excited about. I think there is going to be a presentation that hopefully Tim will go to this time. Our kindergarten numbers.
Can I just ask what the activity was or what the award was for?
I wrote exactly what the email said. So it wasn't any more specific than that. It was an environment, the government environmental award for our continuing.
Oh, I guess I was looking at the principals' report. And it just says.
Yeah, that's what it said.
Award for Environmental Excellence, more information to follow.
Right.
Oh, it's later on in the report, it's applied.
What are you saying?
I'll find it.
I just was wondering what the activity was, but that's okay.
I don't think it was a specific activity Jeff, do you? That's the, what I got from the email was just that.
Okay, thank you.
You can keep that.
Right, that's all that it really said. We were unsure why, that's why they said more information to follow. And our kindergarten numbers remain under 60, I think we're probably at 55 now for next year. So keeping a sharp eye on that too. But really, I think at registration, we're at 53, so we're still staying within the realm there. We also, you may have noticed that we have three retirees this year. John Badger, who's been at Heinsberg for, since 1988. Started as a tech teacher or a shop teacher. And then he's been a PE teacher for all grades, a coach, and also our athletic director. He's coached multiple sports. Erica Place, who's also been at HCS since 1988. She's been a Title I para and most recently a para specialist, working with our first grade team. And Joe Velti, who came to us in 1992 as our triple E educator. So we're very sad to see them go and.
Since 23 years.
Very happy for them as they continue on the next journey of their life.
Thank you.
It's a lot of years that we're losing some of our staff.
The board certainly acknowledges those numerous years of service from all three of them and thanks them very much. We're very sorry to see them go, but we understand that there is a phase two.
That's right.
For each of them.
And the eighth grade trip to Montreal, thank you for proving that. It was phenomenal to see the kids in a different cultural environment and to navigate the subway and to walk two miles through town to get to the science museum is very cool. Only, only good things to say.
Did you get any sleep?
Saturday night.
How did it work out with the buses, swapping the school bus and the high-quality bus?
They took two buses, two school buses.
Oh.
Yeah, and in the end it just made more sense. The kids were phenomenal. They, they only had positive things to say. They loved their time on the bus, they loved their time in Montreal, they loved the sleepover, and so well behaved.
That's crazy.
Yeah. They showed off Heinsberg well.
All right, anything else on that? 5.2, CSSU debrief. Connie, do you want to take a swing at that since you don't want to attend to the whole thing?
Sure, there are two things, just two things to bring our attention to. One of the topics was substitute teacher pay. And it's not within our Heinsberg packet, so you'll want to go to the CSSU packet and look at the recommendations for substitute teacher pay. It was on our CSSU agenda tonight for discussion. And CSSU board will vote on it a month from now. And the, the hope for our HR and the SU is that we would go to one level of pay and increasing it from $80 to $90. And there was a question about what was that, what was the budget impact? And I'm sort of remembering that we had a discussion about this during our budget session, but I couldn't remember. And I was thinking that we had talked about the difference, you know, what was $10 per hour difference? What was that impact on the budget?
Per hour, per day.
Per hour, per hour. So they, you know, someone would be making $90. And so we just want to make sure that we can cover it in our, in our budget. And so we just want to make sure that we can cover it in our, in our budget. And I think that we put that money into our budget, but I, I sort of remember having the conversation of whether it should be done over one year or two years. But what the ninety dollars does is it brings, you know, brings us more in, in line with what is happening in some neighboring districts, where we might be losing some people who would be looking for substitute teaching, and the pay had not increased in, I don't know, five years or something, or... I don't remember the time.
Since two thousand seven?
Two thousand seven, eight years, eight years.
Wasn't the rationale that we were having problems getting substitutes? Wasn't that, wasn't that, do you remember that conversation, wasn't that part of the conversation?
Yeah, so whoever does the, a lot of the organizing, I guess, at the SU level, I don't remember the person's name, but, or where, whether it's done locally, but I guess sometimes across the SU, there's difficulty in finding people.
Right. Is it, is that, is my safe to, is that...
There are times, right, right.
Wasn't that the rationale behind, you know, I think, I asked the question, why do we need to go up, and then they, you know, knowing probably what the answer was, what the answer was is it's...
And what the SU does for us is the, they do the filtering of, that's where people who want to apply to sub, they go there. And they, they could say, we just want to be at Heinsburg, or we'll go anywhere in the SU. But locally, we manage the calling of the subs and arranging that all of ourself, that's not done through the SU.
So I, I was skeptical that there weren't subs out there. So I, I put the ladies through a pretty extensive process where we got the list from central office. These are all the people that said that they were willing to sub for Heinsburg Community School. And we went down and we called every single one of them, and to see if they were truly still available, still willing. And our challenge of finding substitutes, we are, we are left without substitutes every single day. And it's not for lack of effort trying. The, the thing where the money comes into play is that they'll call somebody up, and if, if a neighboring town is already called, of course they're gonna choose them. So we're low men on the total, one of the low men on the total.
So we're paying what?
Eighty dollars. Eighty dollars, I'm sorry, I was saying hour, thank you.
There's no way they're making that out.
Yeah, no, no, eighty dollars a day.
What are y'all doing?
I'm okay now.
Say, yeah, bye.
I found the answer, I'm good.
No, no. So Chittenden Central is eighty-five to a hundred, depending on the training. Burlington eighty-five, Colchester ninety to one-ten, Milton seventy-five to ninety, and so forth. So there's, there's a range.
Some schools that start you off at seventy-five, and then once you've been there fifteen days or twenty days, then they up your pay?
And Cindy's response to that is that it was a bookkeeping nightmare to try to do that, to try to keep track of how many days someone had taught. So anyway, that's the CSSU, it's on the CSSU board agenda for next month for a vote, so if people have opinions, might want to let board members know. I guess it would be at the business meeting that we would have that vote, right, Keith, and not the... Yeah, because we're gonna have the retreat, so if you want to have us talk about it at the retreat, we could. The other piece to bring our attention to is the governance structure with the legislation that, that just came out. We might want to be paying attention to that, and we'll have to, that's on our retreat agenda. And there's a committee that met once already, and we're gonna have to talk about it some more, but the committee was focused on what are we doing for consolidated services now? What's the potential for increasing consolidation, what might that mean? And so the bottom line out of this is prior to our retreat agenda, we probably want to look at a couple things. One would be Title sixteen and section, I think it's two sixty-one, which is the supervisory union, the duties of the SU. And part of our discussion in committee is what are we doing, you know, are we doing all the duties of the SU? And we're doing a lot, but we're not all the way there. There's a lot of wiggle room that we can, and Bill was there, too, if you want to add to that, but... And then the, the other thing we want to look at is the VSBA sent out an email with links to a few documents. One was the two-page executive summary of what was important, and then, you know, to the full language of the legislation. So we probably want to take a look at that, because there's going to be significant incentive for us to do something sooner. If we were to, if SU decided to go in that direction, and we could have a vote by, you know, within the next year, then there's a potential for a ten-cent decrease in taxes. And it goes ten, eight, six, four, two, over a five-year period. And so there are going to be incentives and disincentives built in. So we're just gonna have to spend some time thinking about that. I think one of the stumbling blocks that we had the last time we had the regional education district discussion about, you know, what, what would it mean to have an SU that turns into one supervisory district? The piece, two pieces that we stumbled over is losing some representation locally, you know, because we'd have fewer board members, so overall, we're not gonna have thirty-three board members on one supervisory district board, that wouldn't really make a whole lot of sense. And, and then the other piece is, and what's the representation, it would be based on demographics and population density and so forth, so we wouldn't have five from Heinsburg. The other piece is if there's, what's the representation locally? And if there's something like a local school council that would have some impact in, on budget decision-making, whatever, what's that structure? How would someone be part of the local school council? What kind of authority do they have? What, whose supervise is that? Is that another duty for a principal? And what's the relationship between a local school council and a regional education district board or a supervisory district board? What's, how does that, what's the dynamics and relationship there? So I think those are two things that we're gonna have to, three things, the money, the governance representation, and the structure. So anyway, that's on our board, our retreat agenda in June.
Wow.
Good?
Thank you, yeah.
Okay.
So keep your eye out for things from the VSBA, and as Colleen suggested, look at those to start thinking about what could be a very serious conversation.
Yeah. You know, just, you know, just the consideration, if we said, no, we don't want to do it, well, there's gonna be a penalty. And if we do want to do it, how does that happen?
Yeah.
And it's unclear to me if there's...
It's too preliminary, the, the ink is barely dry on the bill, and I don't even know if the governor has signed it yet, so it's technically not a law, but it will be.
Yeah.
So it's very preliminary at this point, but it sounds like there's two options, and there's a big question in everyone's minds whether we fit in the alternative option. So if we do, how, and if we don't, then we really do have to basically go to consolidating all of the school districts in the SU.
Right. And if, and if our, if we fit into the alternative, we have to provide rationalization. So that's a big report that's gotta be done. And then one of my big questions is, we already know that the agency of education is strapped capacity-wise, personnel. Who's gonna be looking at all of these reports? And then the state board of it has to make the decisions about whether that's, you know, meets the, the standard of passing for an okay rationalization. To me, that's, I, I don't understand that yet, so...
Thank you.
The only thing I would add about the common topic was that there is a person, Art...
Oh, Art Sinosia, yes, thank you.
He came and he, he talked about the legal issues that are pressing in Vermont schools today, and I don't know, I felt really good about where we are. So I, I walked away, he talked a little bit about bullying and harassment, and he also spent some time on gender identity, and that struck a chord with us, because we, we just had somebody in today addressing gender identity and, and kind of raising awareness with our faculty today, and, you know, the need for being proactive. And, you know, we have gender-neutral classrooms, and we're, we're being pretty progressive at Heinsburg, and it feels really good.
Yeah, that, thank you for bringing that up. I, I was going through that mental checklist at the same time, and I think we're there. I think we got it. But you never know what can creep up on you.
Thank you. Turning to money, five point three, third quarter FMR. Someone's gotta take a run at that, or should we just look at Bob's good news in our packet?
Yeah, I, I wondered if you had any questions. It is, it is good news. Where we were forecasting at the end of the second quarter is we're, we're still, we're still feeling really good about where we're gonna finish up, and so, yeah, we've made, we've made a lot of good decisions and been really fiscally responsible, and we're feeling good.
I, I would like to, I'll do this on my own behalf, I won't speak for the board unless you want to pipe in. But I, I'm feeling, I, I want to extend some amount of congratulations to Deb, because that seven-thousand-dollar deficit, yeah, it's a seven-thousand-dollar deficit, but I seem to recall those numbers being four to five times that much in past years, so...
Uh, worse than, but, I, first of all, I would, I would agree with you, she's done phenomenally well. That is, yeah, it's, it's well below where it was a couple of years ago.
Still work to do, but much better than it has been historically.
Positive direction.
Yeah. All right, five point four, five, and six, any committee reports, including Pi or facilities or others that want some forward time?
I don't think I need to report anything for Pi.
Okay.
Because somebody else is sweet, I don't think there's been anything.
Keith, I'm gonna hold you for one second. I thought it was gonna be an action matter.
Yeah.
Approve your entrance, okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's coming.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to be, sorry, okay.
I, I think it relates to the FMR, but yeah, yep, it's coming. All right, moving on to six point O discussion matters, six point one, all five of the policies that are here, they're in the package, presented like they have been for discussion with marked changes. I take it that, well, I'm positive that this is the latest round in our cycle of policy reviews coming from our policy committee.
Yes, would you like me to speak to that at all, or just, you know, field questions?
Sure, if you'd like to. The other thing I would note, again, I had to excuse myself from the SU meeting before you got to this, but it was also discussed, at least on the agenda, it was a discussion item at the SU meeting, so there are people also attending to this at that level.
Just generally, it's just cleaning up language, make, trying to make policy statements more clear, separating it from procedures. At the SU board meeting, there was a question about curriculum and instruction, and, you know, part of it is the curriculum instruction, it's an SU, it's an SU board responsibility. And there had been some language that related to like annual reporting that was very convoluted and really not doable, you know, for all of the different programs, you know. So if it's not getting done, then it doesn't make sense, it's, because in our annual work plans, we target specific things that we want report back on. One of the pieces of the prior policy language that we removed was related, something that kind of created some stumbling blocks. And a concern a number of years ago is that, that a program might be adopted that would have a budget impact, and that came out of another district, and we just realized through discussion at the policy committee level that some of those concerns are taken care of in two places, either through the annual budget review process or through the work plan, and, you know, the targeted focus on what we're doing over a multi-year phase, such as looking at our student services plan for the year. So that's, that's the only thing I would add.
Great, thank you. And again, just to remind everybody, we have several policies on our agenda each month to discuss, and then several as action items, which are the ones that we discussed the prior month. So we don't need to act on any of these tonight. If you have further thoughts, I'm sure Colleen or other members of the policy committee will be happy to entertain questions. Six point two, retreat planning. Just so you all can get them on, make sure it's on your calendars, our retreat is June one in the morning from eight to one. The Sunset Ballroom on Shelburne Road. I know you all heard that consolidation is one of the items on the retreat. We're certainly gonna talk about it at the SU portion of the retreat. We can talk a little bit about it at our portion of the retreat, if you want, but at the very least, I know that one of the things we're gonna talk about is smaller, considerations of smaller consolidations with other schools already in our SU, not necessarily with all of them.
Slash facilities.
Facilities, yep. In some respects, that is sort of what's driving, what's driving that discussion.
Yeah, it's a joint topic.
Yeah. Anything else on the agenda that we have?
If there was anything specifically that you'd like us to prepare, but...
I cannot remember what we talked about in agenda planning, and I think I missed the board chairs for whatever reason.
So for all, all the local parts of the retreat, there's this portion that everybody's gonna do, which is sort of your year in review as the Heinsburg Board, state of the school year review. You're gonna look over your AYP slash action plan, you're going to review this year's presentations on student support services, knowing next year you move into that cycle of, it's on academic rigor. And you're gonna have a conversation together about the tech audit and what happened over the course of the year around tech integration. And then the last part is really your immediate stuff, what, what other topics pertain to Heinsburg? Because all the locals are doing those things, but what else do you want to discuss at the retreat?
I think the consolidation facilities kind of discussion.
Okay.
And what we've done in the past, which, which I've liked, at least for the forecasting ability, if there's anything that you think will materially affect the budget, it might be nice to have a heads-up to start thinking about it, so it doesn't come as a huge shock when we hit the budget season, if, if there's big ups or big downs that you think are coming, at least to mentally prepare us. We are in a very different environment than we were in five, six years ago.
Big, that can change.
That can change.
But...
I won't say it can change on a dime, but...
Big ups and downs for fiscal year sixteen, or for sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, like, three-year lookout, or...
If you, if you can have that, great, but really, what, I mean, what we're talking about is next fiscal year budgeting.
Okay.
In the past, I, I'm just bringing this up for historical context, not saying we're gonna do this. In the past, we have discussed at the retreat how much money we might want to cut from the budget in the coming year, to give you a heads-up to say, all right, start looking for this money.
Yeah.
All right.
Other pertinent issues that you don't have time to discuss in other venues, where this being much more time for you that are pertinent to students, to learning, to...
I don't know, I, that feels like a full agenda to me.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I, I don't know, I personally believe that facilities is the biggest challenge that we face over the next few years. I feel better about it now, given the conversations we've had at meetings over the course of this year, but I still think it's a challenge.
Okay.
Not, not only the, not necessarily the upkeep of the physical plan, because I think we have pretty good direction and, and the concept of what we're gonna do with the White Building now, but are we gonna burst at the seams, is... but are we gonna burst at the seams is the question that I still have.
Good, thanks.
Alright, six point three, communications board corner. Um, haven't had anything in a while and I was looking back at our minutes from a, a last meeting and the idea, which of course didn't get acted upon, was to write about our retiring teachers and to write about staff changes or new teachers, new faculty at the school. I think that would be good segue so that we can say to people, hey, back in the budget, you approved the hiring of a middle school teacher and the hiring of a, you know, additional time for our teacher. Here's what we've done. So, I think that would be a good idea for.
When did you wanna do this, Bob?
Well, see, that's the question, I'm getting there.
Okay.
We, someone would need to figure out when the next deadline is. Probably the Citizen would be a good place to do that and they're weekly, so if you miss one deadline, there's one another week later. It's not like the record where there's, you know, if you miss it, you gotta wait a month. But, uh, nothing imminent, I mean, something in the, in the June or early summer timeframe is probably fine. But of course, then the next question which you know I'm gonna ask is who might wanna do it? Anyone?
I'm feeling very stressed right now. Trying to close up.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do it, but I might need to lean on one or both of you for some data.
And I was just trying to figure out when we will have all the hires, if you want people's names and.
Exactly, exactly. Some, some are completed, some are not.
Right.
So, exactly, that's why, I mean, I.
And I don't even know, I know that I'm hoping to bring the one I'm interviewing for the next couple of days, June fir-, to our June first board meeting, we had talked about that, but you still have another hire out there.
Mm-hmm. So, I would almost shoot for August, kinda like right before the school year begins, it's kinda like a welcome to our new staff.
I, I, I think that's great for the, for that concept.
Two separate ones.
Yeah, maybe two separate, because that's a little late for the folks that are finishing up now.
How about just a thank you to the, you know, from the board? And you have some information, although I, as you pointed out, one of my years came out thirteen, it should've been twenty-three, but you have that information there.
Yeah, alright, I will give, I will give that.
Can I, we can get pictures too.
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion of something else I mentioned, give you more work to put in there?
Be careful, because if I turn into yours.
Just congratulate the kids who are graduating and.
Oh, yeah.
That's a great idea.
And if they get any awards or something, that'd be great, I don't know if anyone get any, I don't know if anything is.
They, the awards, there are a lot of awards given at graduation.
We're changing it.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Oh, we should discuss that then.
Okay.
But, you know, just, I just meant anything that's, if there was anything that was really above and beyond, maybe there is nothing really above and beyond, but anything that was really strike spirit.
Keep in mind, we, we through usually the chair does express the board's congratulations to our graduates.
I just, but I mean, in the, it might be nice in the Citizen just to say, and we got forty-eight kids graduating, you know, forty going to CDU, five are going here, you know, I don't know, just might be.
Yeah, that would even be really nice to put on Facebook too, like here's a note from our board chair.
Yeah, okay.
The new teachers coming in, their idea might be to put it in the Viking too, with maybe their pictures, some parents could just have a face of the name, maybe you already do that, but.
Uh, let's go, any other thoughts? Let's go to six point four, approve here and transfer to construction fund, Jeff, you wanna introduce that one?
Yep, so, um, as it relates to the third quarter FMR, we are forecasting better than expected than, than we even anticipated. So even with the seventy-five thousand dollars of the fund balance, um, what, what Bob and Allegra and I had spoken to is, uh, this might be an opportunity to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars into the construction fund which, uh, could be used as, um, as issues arise or, uh, planful, um, projects come up. Uh, one thing that, um, the HVAC upgrades, the second story classroom wing is, uh, improving the air quality in our middle school classrooms. Um, right now, uh, last week, we got up to ninety-two degrees in the classrooms and, uh, and it's something that we've kicked the tires on a few times, but given our, our, our budget and the, the state of the school, um, it never, never rose to, to the level. So, I would, I would like to put, um, I would like to put it out to bid and kinda see where we're at with those upgrades. But then, white building you alluded to, we are gonna be using the white building, uh, there are upgrades needed. Uh, it's a, it's an old building and then the, the building and grounds, uh, kinda go along with it is that every year Tim comes to me and says, Jeff, like, we need to fix this and it's unanticipated and, um, and some schools have that little buffer in their construction fund and we do not, so.
It was recommended that if you do this, you're supposed to target what you would use the funds for. They aren't supposed to just sit, so, yeah, I'm just thinking the board kinda has to.
On six point four, you can see where the funds are targeted.
It's on page seventy-seven of your packet.
Great.
Cause we, don't we have to vote on the projects at some point?
No, um, my, my understanding, and I could be wrong, um, this, well, yeah, you do. Uh, any, any project over that threshold, I think it's fifteen thousand dollars.
You vote on the bids, not the project, so this is what the money is targeted for.
So if we, if we replace carpets and it's five thousand dollars, I wouldn't come to you to say, we're gonna replace the carpets, do I have your approval? If we replace a floor in the white building and it's over, I think it's fifteen thousand dollars is the number that's in my head that we need board, there's a, there's a certain threshold that we need board approval on.
For the bids though. Not for doing the work.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
One is a timing question, so I, I think I understand why you're doing this at the end of the year, but hypothetically, if we didn't, could we do this some other time?
No, what would happen is that the, um, if we didn't do this, uh, right now, we're forecasting to put, uh, an additional two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into the, into the fund balance to bring that up to, to five twenty-five. Um, i- if we did this, it would be reduced by seventy-five thousand. Uh, and these are, remember, these are third quarter numbers, um, uh, we always take a more or less a conservative approach.
So if it's, it's within the budget that was approved, which is what I was thinking of with the, um, with the vote, if it was outside the budget that was approved, then we'd have to bring it back for vote. But it's within the budget that was approved, it just, we didn't spend it that way.
Uh, with, so fiscal year fifteen budget that was approved?
Yeah.
Yeah, that we would. Yes, correct.
And if we didn't authorize this transfer, theoretically, you would, could, not would, could, put these projects in next year's budget, blossoming next year's budget by seventy-five thousand dollars and then we would have to figure out whether we would want to, obviously getting past the approval, yeah, we say that budget number's okay, fund it with tax revenue or application of fund balance.
Correct.
From what's there.
Yeah.
And then it has an impact on, you know, I, I haven't looked at the new legislation enough, but there's something related to our, you know, the, the spending year to year, right?
So we're just.
So we, we would wanna spend it now, I think.
We're just discussing this now, it's not an action item.
Right.
When's the game? June, we would go down it in June, so we should be clear on many of the questions we might have or.
So why is it two twenty-five goes to the general fund balance if we're projecting to be three hundred over, is that?
Uh, because you allocated seventy-five thousand of that.
Earlier, right?
Yeah.
Okay, right, 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 it just happens to be the same number.
Yeah, right.
Just throw me off.
And because this, we can authorize this because it's within this year's budget as opposed to what we do with the voters by asking them to apply the fund. Cause they've already, they've already approved this budgetary amount. So, the other question I have is, so we're just discussing whether to do this, we're not necessarily approving of these projects.
Correct, that's absolutely correct.
Are we gonna have another bite at that apple? If you say hypothetically wanted to go out to bid on one of these, would we then get a chance to discuss whether we think that's a good idea or not?
Uh, the, the bid would come to you and then, so if the bid came to you, you wouldn't have to accept any of the bids.
Yes, but here's the concern, why, how I have people spin wheels and get bids for a project that we might not approve.
Correct, so I, uh, I, unless Molly knows the answer, I would say that, um, um.
I'd hope the facilities committee would.
Like, uh, I would say on my word that I would bring it back to the board, but I mean that.
I suppose the facilities committee, I think Kathy's right.
Cause I, I have some concerns, I don't wanna air them right now, but I have some concerns at least about one of the projects you mentioned.
Okay.
Yeah, I would invite any of the board members to go to the second floor of a middle school on a day when it's above eighty degrees and really get to experience that.
Uh, if we're trying to create learning conducive environments, it's.
It's unbelievable.
It's so bad, like I can't put it into words, um, just sweat dripping off the kids' foreheads as, as we're expecting them to learn.
Well, fine, now you've, now you, now you've opened the can of worms, so I don't, I don't dispute that at all. But my concern is where would that put us relative to other schools in the SU and other schools in this region? So I don't, I don't wanna be the outlier that has AC and no one else does.
We've talked about that, um, internally and, uh, what's different about our schools is that we have two floors. And what would be different is that on the second floor of all of our buildings, we would have AC and on the first floor of our, all of our buildings, just like all the other SU. And I, and I realize that Charlotte is also two-story, um, but.
Wilson is too.
Oh, Wilson Central.
Three schools, yeah.
Yeah.
We want our kids to sweat with the best.
There's something, uh, it's not that there's something different, but I, I like Kathy's suggestion. I would, I would be happy to, to take everybody on a walk.
Well, it's, it gets, just, I'm just thinking about my home spaces, very well oriented the way the school is and it gets sun all day long, southwest exposure on that second floor, blah, blah, blah.
In CDU, any room that doesn't, if I remember correctly from our conversation, any room that doesn't have a outside window has air conditioning. I think that's the way they established the guidelines here. I don't know if that helps. I just know that when the, you know, the construction project finished, the air handling in, um, some of the upstairs never quite worked to the expectations of people in the building. I think people were expecting a lot of.
But as you know, this is my fifth year, I've never once entertained this option.
To, to the point that this is a discussion item and the substance of the item is should we move seventy-five grand into the construction fund? I don't have any qualms with that. I would be supportive of that.
But then.
Given, given construction capital needs that we're going to have at the school at some point.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know about others.
I, I just, you know, I work in a very old building at UVM and the upper floors can be just absolutely brutal and it is really difficult to think when it gets really hot and humid. And, you know, we're trying to keep the kids in the building into June, far into June. Um, I think we should just give this serious consideration.
I, I think my preference is to take Kathy's suggestion and park this with the facilities committee to examine and.
Wasn't this coming out of the facility?
And then come back.
Uh, it is not, it is coming out of the FMR that, um, um, we had, the third quarter FMR where it was, um, I raised the question about the construction fund and it being at zero because this is the first year in a long time that our construction fund has been at zero because of big projects that have had additional monies tied to them. Um, and, and, um, I was counseled that some schools have, um, a little buffer in case things happen. And, um, but it would be advisable to have a couple of projects in mind that you know are in need of repair or upgrade, so. But it did not, uh, we haven't, as a facilities committee, in a few months. So we, we can bring it back to that.
So who's on the facilities committee?
Right.
And Tim P. and Jeff and Bob Mason.
Yeah.
So one thing to consider since this is within this financial year is, um, meeting soon so that this conversation can get checked off and voted upon at the June, uh, likely at the financial meeting, at the budget meeting as opposed to the retreat. But just be thinking that that committee can't, would need to meet really soon to try to figure out and pose some specific focus, foci for the funds.
I feel like, based upon the surplus in the FMR and based upon whether these three projects are not, we may not have to point to projects, but whether we can move in that direction or not, I think it's prudent, a good idea to transfer some of those funds to a construct, to a building, building fund, construction fund?
Construction fund.
Construction fund. You know, just whether one, none, or all of them get done, something else is gonna come up regardless. That's my thinking. Especially in time when we're doing so well on the, the fiscal management end, you are, I should say. That's my thought.
Keith, is it appropriate to ask a question about one of those projects?
I think that can of worms has been opened, sure.
Just on that air conditioning piece, how many school days a year do you feel like are affected by hot temperatures?
Uh, if I were to guesstimate, most of September and, um, I don't feel like we had a spring, but it jumped from winter to eighty degrees, uh, and that was two weeks ago. And that was early May, so, again, it, it's all variable. Today in our faculty meeting, it's just, uh, it, it's, it's very, uh, it's varied, but I would say, um, thirty school days.
And summer school is not, is not held in air condition, I mean, it might give more flexibility to what other things we could offer in the summer. Right now, the white building is really the only, or our, our offices, but.
We got a whole graduation up there too.
That's a pat, right of passage, right, everybody has to go in June.
June eleventh, mark it in your calendar, it'll be ninety.
So I, I guess I would say if, um, if you, if you, um, the decision, like Molly said, is if you pass it to the facilities committee, that's something that we would need to know. But what I'm also hearing is it might be prudent to move the money and then decide and then that would give us some time to meet as a facilities if it came on our lips.
So that'll be part of that action.
Next.
So would the classrooms be air conditioned individually and the common space would be not, is that how it would work?
We'll get back to you on that.
Right, now you're going down the rabbit hole.
And stage C, just to, just to be sure, we're, we're talking about HVAC upgrades.
HVAC. To be continued, I know enough about building air conditionings that like.
That's why we're gonna park it in the first. Alright, moving on, action matters. All right, moving on, action matters. Oh my God, we're late. Ugh, terribly disappointed. Yeah, moving. So, seven point one, adopts the SSU fifteen, sixteen student and PD calendar. It's in your packet. I think we've talked about it and looked at it at least once, if not twice.
I think there's been a change, yeah, with the snow days, that's new? Is that newer than the red?
That's new this year. I think it's been on previous drafts of this calendar, but it's certainly a change, um, from prior year calendars, and I think we all know why.
I think we asked for that, yeah.
I think it's a good idea, yeah. Still moved? Thank you, Kathy.
Second.
Thank you, Bill, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you, the motion carries. Seven point two, support staff contract ratification. Uh, as we well know, Bill and, uh, Colleen and their, uh, committee worked very diligently to get a support staff contract completed and, uh, ready to be put in front of us, and now we need to ratify it. So I guess I'll entertain a motion before we have any comments or discussion.
So moved.
Thank you, Colleen, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. Anything you guys, either of you would like to add?
I think the, the one thing that, um, was a pos-, a lot of positives, but one thing that we negotiated very hard to get and we got was a percent increase one year and a cents per hour increase in next year and a percent increase in a cents per hour, the rationale being, we were trying to get the newer folks and the lowest paid folks a little more money instead of giving the majority of the increase to the folks who've been around along, something they don't deserve it, but we felt like that the, we wanted to have some continuity and help out the, the new hires to, A, attract more people, but also give them a, a little stronger wage. Anything else?
Yeah, no, I, I think that was a, a big, big agreement. And the other piece was just a very positive, hardworking environment, you know, people's came to the meetings having done their homework and ready to do the hard work of trying to come to an agreement, and Cindy, um, KW did an excellent job helping facilitate the process, along with Scott Cameron, so it was a good team.
Great, well, kudos to both of you and your committee, and congratulations and thanks as well. I guess we're ready for the questions, so all those in favor of ratifying the new support staff contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries, thank you. Seven point three, we have two personnel items. Seven point three point one, nomination of a point two FTE art teacher. Materials have been, uh, submitted to us as the board, so I will entertain a motion to approve that nomination.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. Uh, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the nomination?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you, the motion carries. Seven point three point two, increase of point oh five FTE to Spanish teacher contract. Again, these materials were included in our board materials for this meeting, uh, increasing the FTE of our Spanish teacher by this point oh five amount.
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy.
Second. Second.
Thank you, Stacy. Questions, discussion?
I make a point, um, first I wanna make it clear to anyone out there watching that this was discussed during our budget cycle and, um, presentation by the principals, and we all, I guess we agreed to time, and we've been, we've been fully informed of this, so it seems like we're doing this in a rapid fashion, but we've had all the background materials and the thinking around it.
This, this is, for example, the ramification of the discussion that we had as a board with our budget buddies during the budget process.
Thank you.
The voters approving the budget, and now that we have the money to spend for that, this is acting upon that after a, uh, appropriate search and evaluation of how to implement that, just a series of decisions. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Hearing none, the motion carries, thank you. Seven point four, award bid for roof replacement. Materials are in our packet at page eighty-four, I think, uh, if you want to look at it, and I guess...
It says seven point five, is it seven five or seven four?
Seven four, yeah, you're right, it is mislabeled, Stacy.
That's okay, I just wanna make sure you didn't skip one.
Um, so I guess I'll take a motion to award a bid for roof replacement.
So moved.
Thank you, Kathy.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Any discussion before we act on the question? Um, one of our administrators, can you just give us a little bit of background about what this is for? A roof, obviously?
So if you remember back to the five-year capital improvement plan, we have sections of roof that need to be repaired, um, in the next two or three years, and, uh, and this is a, a section that, uh, was part of the, the five-year capital improvement plan, and we were, um, Tim has done work with Hathorn before and has been really impressed and, um, was really surprised that they came in as the low build bidder, so he was, yeah, so he was, uh, very confident moving forward with them.
And is the, I guess what they wanna be delivering, all three of them, is going to be exactly the same?
Yep, yep. They all take a look at the job that, that's needed and come back to us with what they believe it's gonna cost them to do the work, and then Tim, with his experience and knowledge, uh, takes a look at their bids very closely.
I know he's very, I know he's very good, yeah.
Great, thank you very much. You ready for the question? All right, all those in favor of seven point four, awarding the bid to Hay- Hathorn?
Hathorn.
Ho- Hathorn, roofing.
Hey, I was trying.
Uh, any extensions or objections? Hearing none, the motion carries, thank you very much. Eight point oh, consent agenda. I will, uh, love a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any extensions or objections? Hearing none, the motion carries, thank you very much.
Did I just catch something that I missed? Who, who, um...
Behind me, Bill first, me second.
Bill first, thank you.
It's easier if the two, the two people just do it all at once.
Exactly, that's how we should do it, it's the same two people, right?
Uh, nine point oh, next meeting dates. We have a board retreat on June one, again, eight AM, uh, Sunset Ballroom, and we have a business meeting, June twenty-third, at five thirty. The business meeting for the SU is also at five thirty. Are we gonna do all the things together, or is there a reason why we should meet at different times?
I honestly don't know the answer to that.
Well, the, the five thirty one?
They'll be short meetings, so even if...
Yeah, usually like, you, you, we're all in the same room.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, that's right.
That one is, keep back in the quorum at CDU.
Yeah.
And it is a course.
June twenty-three at five thirty.
So everybody goes to that?
Everybody goes to that. It's a, it's a business, it's a meeting for all board members of every board.
Yeah.
So, we need at least, Stacy, we need at least three of us. And thank you very much, by the way, speaking of quorums, for indulging us in the slight uncertainty of when we were gonna start tonight. I said to my wife when Bill...
You all did a very good job.
When Bill walked in the music room tonight, I said to my wife, hey, we got a quorum. As long as we don't talk about school board stuff, it's fine.
The kids were great.
The kids were great.
Yeah.
All right, you know what happens now?
Approved.
I need a motion to adjourn, so, thank you, Bill, thank you, Stacy. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, at eight twenty-eight.